And now, we'll open the meeting of July 24, 2012. And roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is currently absent.
Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Daigle.
I may not be able to move fast enough here, but I was reading about the, I'm not sure what number, the waiver as far as the bed tax when the room is comp, that they don't have to pay the tax. What item am I referring to?
That's item four on the consent calendar.
Okay. So is there a fiscal impact of that? Like how much per year we might be talking about?
We did have a fiscal impact when we talked to you at study session. It's relatively fuzzy because it's still kind of difficult to calculate, but maybe Tracy knows better off.
Yeah, the rough estimate we used was about $100,000 a year, and I think this council decided that they didn't want further analysis, that the reason behind it was documented.
Okay. So it would be reported then, how many comp rooms per year?
They'll provide us that information as they do already, but we won't be assessing tax on any comp rooms.
Okay.
As written.
Thanks.
Councilman Hen?
I have nothing.
Councilman Selich?
No questions.
Councilman Hill?
Just a couple of comments, if I may. On item number eight, the Lido Island Bayfront lease, classically in that lease is the provision at the end of the term that the buildings are to be left in a state as received, normal wear and tear. I have personally found in leases that it's much more advantageous to the landlord to have a clause to say that the landlord has the option of having the buildings removed or left. Because what often happens at the end of these long-term leases, the buildings are of no value, and you actually have to pay to have them removed. And I would just suggest, as we look at other leases, that we might look at including that kind of a clause. On item number 10, just an item of frustration, why do we have to go to Nevada to find a qualified ADA consultant? Surely we have those kinds of qualified consultants close to home, if not at home. And I would just recommend that we always focus on looking for those people that are within our community to serve us before we go outside.
Mayor Protamcurry?
I have none.
All right. We now have a presentation by Explore Ocean.
My name is Tom Pollak, and I'm the Capital Campaign Chairman for Explore Ocean. And before we begin today, I'd like to just introduce my team that accompanied me to the presentation today, starting with my board chairman, Tim Collins, a board member, Doug Pasquale, my board member Craig Smith, my president Rita Stenland, Leslie Perovich with Development, and Rochelle McReynolds, who's been hired for the help with the Capital Campaign as well. And before I start, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we're here today to do, and three key points, and this video will help start it off, because we want to talk to you a little bit about the professional due diligence that we've done to date to get to this point, to present to you. The second is our firm commitment to a five-year capital campaign plan. And third is to show a compelling story and present solutions to various challenges to continue the city's investment in the Balboa Village Fund Zone. And with that, I can have Lauren start this video to show you what we're going to be doing down there. Go ahead, Lauren. Thank you.
It's only six minutes.
Explore Ocean has fascinated explorers for eons. It has been a life-giving source of food and oxygen. It has been a place of myth and unknown peril. The ocean is the source of all life on our planet, and yet, it is an almost uncharted frontier. Exploring the ocean is the next great mission for the benefit and survival of mankind. And this thrilling new adventure begins right here in Newport Beach. For a quarter century, the Newport Harbor Nautical Museum has celebrated the area's rich maritime heritage. Building on that legacy, an exciting new attraction is on the horizon, designed to inspire a whole new generation of ocean-going exploration. A team of award-winning designers is creating a world-class interactive experience that puts an entire ocean of discovery in your grasp. This is Explore Ocean.
Explore Ocean is really going to be the gateway to ocean adventure.
Explore Ocean is a new experience right here on the Newport Peninsula.
It'll become people's portal to the sea.
Overlooking the bay, the iconic Explore Ocean building is a stunning new landmark on Newport Harbor's bustling waterfront. The Grand Entry Plaza is a hub of activity, with tantalizing glimpses of the fun within. Entering beneath an immense freight gantry, you'll find yourself in the explorer's hall, launching point for your aquatic adventure. From this thriving crossroads, you choose from a dazzling array of nautical experiences. First up, strap in and pilot a futuristic submersible on a voyage to uncharted ocean depths. Utilizing state-of-the-art flight simulator technology and interactive digital media, this thrilling ride experience mirrors real scientific expeditions happening right now. At the underwater treasure hunt, you can scour a shipwreck by piloting remote-controlled subs. In the navigation workshop, you have the chance to try a multitude of seafaring tools, from ancient star charts to modern-day GPS. Explore Ocean's special exhibits gallery offers exclusive and traveling attractions, including exhibitions that celebrate Newport Harbor's nautical history. Venturing upstairs, you find Newport shores, where little explorers can play on a whimsical sailing ship, or make contact with living sea creatures in the touch pools. And this is just the beginning of the spectacular wonders you'll find here. Explore Ocean is home to two world-class immersive attractions. Enter the Ocean Observatory, a multimedia live show that enables you to interact with a worldwide community of scientists and explorers. In this unique theater experience, guests of all ages are invited to help investigate the new frontiers of our mysterious blue planet. An Explore Ocean signature experience is still waiting. Climb aboard a mighty ship and set sail on a wild odyssey above and below the waves. This is Into the Unknown, an unforgettable 4D motion theater unlike anything you've ever experienced. 360 degrees of eye-popping digital projection immerses you in sun-drenched tropical seas one moment, and the gauntlet of Arctic glaciers the next. You feel the wind and spray of the ocean swell. Suddenly, a powerful storm strikes. The deck pitches and heaves on restless waves. Torrential rain pounds the ship as lightning splits the sky. A monstrous rogue wave consumes the horizon, and when your vessel is overwhelmed, you plunge into the abyss, descending into the mystifying realms waiting beneath the tides. Explore Ocean's dazzling family attractions continue harborside, energizing Balboa Peninsula with the all-new Adventure Pier. Building on the storied 75-year legacy of the Balboa Fund Zone, this vibrant amusement center features elaborately themed play experiences and a dazzling new Ferris wheel. There's a brand-new dock for boaters and a whole fleet of Explore Ocean craft waiting to launch. After sunset, the entire Adventure Pier becomes the stage for a spectacular nighttime show. This sensational outdoor entertainment district is destined to become an ideal year-round evening destination.
The Adventure Pier is going to be an amazing aspect of our project.
A new tradition here in Newport Harbor. It'll be the place to be on a summer evening.
For all the entertainment to be found here, it is the educational component that is most crucial to the mission of Explore Ocean. Wide-ranging science and humanities educational programs, running the gamut from the latest discoveries in ocean conservation to the quest for natural resources, are the hallmarks of Explore Ocean.
The mission is to inspire the next generation of explorers and stewards of the great wild blue planet.
By coming here, they're going to learn things they never even imagined were possible, because we're going to do it in a way that's going to be on a grand scale that people are going to really, really be thrilled to watch.
Explore Ocean's innovative facility is an iconic design, synthesizing classical maritime themes with 21st-century sustainable building. From its beautifully sculpted living walls of native plants to its solar panel roof, Explore Ocean is a LEED-certified environmentally-friendly building.
We're doing some really exciting, cutting-edge strategies as far as sustainability. It'll be a really wonderful sort of integration of color and landscape and light.
The ocean covers 2/3 of our planet, and we've explored less than 5% of it. We know more about the surface of the moon than the ocean.
What we want to do here at Explore Ocean is give people a chance to really do and to imagine what it would be like to actually sail a three-masted sailing ship, or take that two-man submarine down to the deepest parts of the Marianas Trench.
They're going to find an amazing world down here that they didn't even know existed.
They'll never look at the ocean the same way again.
I am truly excited about this project. This is a major contribution, not just to Balboa Village, but to the city of Newport Beach, to really the area as a whole. It'll become, I believe, a true destination.
The next frontier of discovery arrives on the time, and you have the opportunity to be a part of the adventure. Explore the deep. Explore the unknown. Explore Ocean.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know, maybe you've seen it before. Mike, thank you for the cameo appearance on that, by the way. We very much appreciate that.
I feel like we should be clapping.
Yeah, I was going to say, a round of applause for Mike. And to follow that up, we have some numbers we'd like to share with you. We have another presentation, a short one here. It's a little PowerPoint that we put together. That might show better perhaps with the lights out, or, I think, that's hard to read. Okay, there we go. And our intent here, as we talk about, is bringing more fun back to the Fun Zone, and we wanted to talk a little bit about our mission statement, which has been refined from simply a small regional nautical museum to focus on the oceans. And this mission statement goes, couples with a very strong business plan as well that goes with it. The organization purchased the property back in the end of 2006, so they've gone through several iterations to get to this point of where they are today. What I wanted to talk a little bit about is, you know, how Newport Beach has, you know, kind of come along, you know, in the last, you know, 100 years or thereabouts, from a small, mature, a small summertime vacation spot, into really a world-class location for business hotels and resorts, and how we fit into that. For instance, you know, up at Fashion Island, you know, they did the $100 million renovation up there, and they're selling, you know, maybe $600 million worth of retail at a Fashion Island these days. To the resort at Pelican Hill, where Irvine Company paid, I believe, about $1 billion in development fees to the county of Orange, and this is now the number-one resort in To PIMCO, who we all know is building a new skyscraper in Fashion Island, and that's the world's largest investment firm with, I think they're approaching about $1.7 trillion in assets, and they chose, fortunately, to stay in Newport Beach. I'm sure they had a lot of opportunities, but they decided to stay here, all the way to, of course, the civic center that's being built, you know, on the other side of town. And so what we see is Newport Beach has changed quite a bit from where it was 100 years ago to where it is today. And so what we look at with Explore Ocean is how we fit into that scheme. So what we've done is we've gone out, and we've, in the last couple of years, two, three years, we've gone out and hired our experts, consultants. Coming being that one of the ones that do the project and the attraction, excuse me, the project and cost estimates. We hired the head of our group, who's an experienced attraction designer, ranging from, you know, Universal Studios to the very successful World War II museum in New Orleans, to LPA, that's over here in Irvine. They're local architects. They're very much leaders of LEED-certified environmentally-friendly buildings. Rick DiAmato is the principal at LPA, is our chief architect. And his inspiration for the building, he'll tell you, is kind of looking at the underside of like a pier, and looking upwards and seeing those wood posts go up in the air, and the wood on top, and the quality of the materials that it's built out of. And he's in the video, you saw him there a little bit, and he's a great guy. To AECom, we hired them to do two reports for us, a market and financial analysis and a community benefit analysis, talking about, does Explore Ocean belong in its current location? And then what does it mean if it's built and moving forward? And they also provide, their economic division's been around for 50 years. They were the ones that, I think, helped Walt Disney find Disneyland in Anaheim and also Orlando as well. So we really went out and tried to hire very, very experienced experts to help us along on this process. So looking into the community and economic benefits study, is what we looked at first, they, AECom essentially identified four major areas to focus on, economic, social, education, and community revitalization. The first one, with economic benefits, they just identified the three areas there for regional competitiveness, property values, and essentially, the cultural centers in this country provide about $160 billion in economic activity nationwide. So it's a significant amount of revenue is spent on cultural attractions. They also looked at the social benefits of what Explore Ocean would create, and they talk about a sense of place, gives a city a sense of place. You know, we don't, we don't have, honestly, within the city of Newport Beach, really that many cultural attractions that are taken, other than the museum of art. Orange County Museum of Art here, which I believe is going to be leaving us soon. Talk about our cultural heritage, civic engagement, volunteerism. You know, a project like Explore Ocean, not only is it going to have a lot of employees and some really cool jobs, but you're going to have a lot of volunteers, hundreds of volunteers to make a project like this work. To the educational benefits, where the school curriculum, you know, it's getting shorter and shorter these days, what they can do, and so a facility like Explore Ocean will capitalize on that, allow young people to come down and enjoy the ocean and the sea in ways that the school curriculum is not going to provide, to professional development and any research, and that's going to be conducted on the premises as well for the students. They looked at the quality of life. They agreed with us, AECom agreed with us, that it would be a dynamic catalyst, leading the way for the community revitalization in the Balboa Village area. And also, we looked at the Citizen Advisory Panel report for the Balboa Village Fund Zone, and we wanted to make sure that we met the brand promise for that. There's a very lengthy, long report on that I won't go into now, but we wanted to make sure that we would meet that brand promise, and we feel that we do. AECom went one step further. They wanted to look at Newport Beach in general and how it was doing compared to 19 other cities across the country, and many here in Southern California, and they wanted to look at, on two areas, arts funding per capita and the percent of the total budget. And what we found was rather surprising, and when they came back to us, and we said, "Okay, well, let's see how we're doing." So they talked about cultural funding mechanisms in other cities across the country, and what various cities employ and various tools. So looking at it, they went down the list here, and they talked a little bit about the total city budget and the per capita spending. And Newport Beach ended up coming down here more at the bottom, at basically $2 per capita here, which was somewhat surprising. And then they looked at the arts budget as a percent of the total, and to see where other cities ranked in there as well. And we came down here towards the bottom of the list as well there. And that, I guess, was somewhat surprising to us. We didn't know that that was actually the case. So moving forward, they suggested the typical solutions for cultural districts, funding, you know, general funds, DOT, sales tax, developer, on down the list, room assessments. And these are things that if the city were to have the willpower and the residents have the desire to build out perhaps a cultural district within Newport Beach, those are some of the tools that might be available to you to do, to look at. Probably, perhaps, a committee might study that. And then, of course, we looked at the economic impact, the one-time impact of the project, and the annual recurring impacts of the project. And what we came down to look at, we, after going through it, is we're going to make an investment of $80 million in the Balboa Village to build Explore Ocean. So it's not a, it's a significant project for the area, and one that will be, in the busy season, will attract the existing tourists that are already there, and in the off-season, it'll become a destination point for people to come to. AECom had six major findings here, and they felt that Orange County was very much underserved by cultural facilities compared to, say, Los Angeles or San Diego. That Explore Ocean would absolutely be a catalytic project for the revitalization of the Balboa Village Fund Zone, but it may not be the only one. A strong concept, they looked at how many people would actually be attending on a busy day, and they felt that up to 2,000 visitors a day would be visiting us in the summertime. They felt that it was an extremely strong concept. It's unique in the country. There's nothing else like it anywhere in the United States. They felt that it would fall with an earned income ratio of at least 70%. And AECom is known for giving very conservative forecasts, which we were happy to see, well above industry averages. You know, the average museum might make perhaps 35% earned revenue, so double what an average museum would make. They felt the beneficiaries would be the hotel, retail, and restaurants in the area would benefit from the influx of the visitors and the residents. And most interesting, they looked at the way that the pattern, the people that would be coming to Explore Ocean, where would they be coming from? You know, how far of a drive, how far of a location? They found that it would really be evenly split between the residents that are living close by and the existing visitors to the Fun Zone. And with that, we said, "Well, how many people are going to come here on a stabilized year? After the first year or two, you tend to get very busy the first year or two with a lot of people. Your marketing budget is up, people are coming down, but how will it end up, say, a couple years after it opens up? What will it look like?" And AECom is known for doing very, very exact scientific, I think the report was 100 pages, and it took you to page 85 for them to get to their conclusions, and they walk you all the way through it. And their feeling was that we would be seeing roughly 134,000 people from the resident market attending Explore Ocean, 127,000 overnight leisure tourists, combined for about 261,000 people visiting Explore Ocean annually, spread out throughout the entire year. They thought that the people becoming would be spending money in Newport Beach and in Orange County in general. You can see all the different sources that they cite at the bottom of the presentation there. They felt the project would build about 117 jobs in Newport Beach, and those are some really, really neat jobs, from the people that operate the various equipment within the building, to people that are involved in education, to the staff, to people on the waterfront, people on the boardwalk, and some of the ancillary jobs that are created, you know, in the immediate area around us as well. So that's always good news. Then we asked them, "Well, what does it mean to the city of Newport Beach? How will that help? How will that help? How will the project help the city of Newport Beach?" And they went through, this is a stripped-down version of what they came through, but they thought that it would produce about almost $150,000 of revenue to the city every year through sales tax and transit occupancy tax. And again, they have a very elaborate methodology to get you there. Then they also looked at, AECom is very good at looking at, what is the demand for the parking situation? What will this attraction create for a demand for parking throughout the year? And so they looked at the Palm Street Lot, which, as you know, you just recently purchased and redeveloped, and here's a day taken out of the summer, you have a lot of cars looking for places to park already. And they looked at it, and they said, "Well, we feel that based on the demand that we showed you of the 261,000 people, that you're going to require, on average, 300 immediately-adjacent parking spaces to be required for the project." So in the past, you know, the other reports that we've looked at, the Walker Parking Consultant, the Nelson Nygaard, and the other report generated as well, the three reports basically all kind of said the same thing, that until we know what the demand of Explore Ocean's going to be, it's hard for us to give you how much parking's going, what is going to be the demand. The status quo, they know, but they didn't know the future in those reports. And so that's why we're back today, to show you our demand for the amount of parking that will be required, that it will generate. And if we're a catalyst, so it's not only the 300 spaces that will be needed for Explore Ocean, but the other businesses that will benefit will also require parking for the village down there. So if you, if the nature of the business, going back and looking at the Walker study, if the nature of the business is such that you go from some of the businesses that don't require much parking, to, say, little higher-end restaurants that may require four or five times the amount of parking, you're going to find additional parking demand being created due to Explore Ocean being the catalyst of what's going on down there. So if we're going to talk about 300 parking spaces, we thought, "Well, let's present a few solutions for you to consider," and down the road here. And one of them, of course, would be automated parking structure. The city of West Hollywood actually just commissioned a new structure to be built. It'll be built within a couple of years up there. LPA, I believe, is the architect of the building, and you'll actually have a chance to go look at that. They needed to create a couple hundred parking spaces up there, and they went to an automated parking structure, and they found that was very economical for them to look at. Of course, the CAP also addressed many of the things that are on here. The Balboa Citizen Advisory Panel looked at the joint use agreements, the parking management plan, that's been recommended within the Walker study, which the city has implemented. Many of the recommendations in the Walker study have been actually implemented down there, and off-site parking, et cetera, valet service. But what those studies, again, didn't know, they never really knew how many parking spaces were going to be needed down there. So we also want to talk to you a little bit about where are we on this project? What have we done so far, and the current status? We're programming for 25,000 square feet of exhibit space. We've gone through the design. We actually went out and hired the architect, so what you may have seen in the past were like a concept car that never got built. This time, the board went out and hired the architect, hired the show firm, so you have not only a building, but the programming to go with it. Okay? The preliminary cost estimates, which you saw. You saw glimpses of the market and financial analysis report and the community economic report put out by AECom. The capital campaign department was formed. We looked at our organizational structure many months ago, and decided that we wanted to have a structure that would actually ensue that we could raise the funds necessary to do this. So therefore, I moved from being chairman of the board to the capital campaign chairman, one to one to the other, and then we've been looking to staff up in that area. Shelley here brings with her a history of very successful raising for capital campaigns, of pulling in around 3/4 of a billion dollars on capital campaigns, stretching from Boston to San Francisco. So we want, we want to leave the impression with you that we're serious about moving this project forward, and that we have the staff and the capacity to pull this off. And lastly, we have our new boardwalk attractions that we're investing in down there, and that's something that's our commitment to the Fun Zone, to put fun back in the Fun Zone. And you may not have seen it yet, or may have seen it in the newspaper. This is one of three that we're going to be putting on the boardwalk. This one's called Ocean Motion, which replaced an older bungee style, and we're running that down there on the boardwalk, and you can see the lines have been, I think it started on July 2nd, and there's always 15 or 20 young kids involved trying to get on this. These are ocean-themed things that are going to be, attractions on the boardwalk that you're going to see. We're probably going to bring a couple more down there. So, and that's part of helping to revitalize the area. We're doing what we can now, okay, to get people down there, and of course, the other, the building, the waterfront, and the boardwalk are all part of it. Our project schedule, I wanted, we wanted to put out, to tell you what we're doing now. We're doing soils testing and site survey presently, recruiting our capital campaign leadership board, and you can kind of see the other timeline, how things are panning out here, how we're moving forward. Our goal here is to always show progress towards what we're going for. Okay? Design development, construction, plan checking, soft opening at the end of 2017, a grand opening at the end of 2018. One of the reasons we wanted to talk to you about this, excuse me, was the coordination with the city regarding, for instance, the lay-down area that we'll need to build the project, where we're going to actually put the material. Will it be on the parking lot? Will it be on the street? Where are we going to be able to do that? So we wanted to get in early in the pipeline so that staff and the city council members could see that. And always, that we're always busy, basically, as we move this project forward. Our commitment so far, and I think I saw some of you at our 25th anniversary party last October, we had about 450 people show up for that party, where we unveiled our preview center. And we felt it was necessary to build a preview center so that the community could understand what we were doing and see it and kind of experience a taste of what we're going to be doing down there. To date, we've had 15,000 visitors. They're given the, afforded the opportunity to fill out a comment card. We've received back hundreds of comment cards, and we're keeping track of all that metric. And 89% of the people on the card, when they're asked to comment on an open-ended question or even a closed-ended question, are positive about the project. They want it to be built, and we've kept track of all that. And Rita, our president, and myself to a lesser extent, have gone out to the community and have done over 40 community events and presentations with the various homeowners associations, Rotary Club, Kiwanis, I mean, the list is very, very long. And there's more planned. To tell people what we're up to, take questions, listen to what people's input is, and that way they feel that they're part of the decision that's happening down there. And as I began the presentation, we talked about the three major points we wanted to drive home with you, is simply our professional due diligence to get to the point we are today, our commitment to the five-year capital campaign, and we believe we're telling a very compelling story for the city to invest in the public improvements in the Balboa Village Fund Zone, which is, I think, a very relevant topic right now, that, and Mike Hen has been part of the CAP, and they've just done their recommendations, which have been really, really comprehensive. And they've actually held all those meetings at our facility, and so we've been participating and listening to that the whole way. And so with all that, together, our goal here with the residents and with the city council is to inspire a new wave of ocean exploration and discovery. That's your five-second elevator pitch there on what we're doing down there, where you become part of the experience. So you're not just there to look at ship models and paintings on the wall, but you become the explorer at any age. And we're gearing ourselves for families, so it's not just a children's entertainment area, that's for everybody. So during the holidays or during the summer, it's an area for all the residents of Newport Beach to enjoy. And we brought a couple other shots here along, you may not have seen, of the building, kind of taken from the Adventure Pier that LPA produced for us. Another picture, looking down the boardwalk, that would be if you were at the ferry boat, getting off of Balboa Peninsula, looking down, and you can see the grow walls here, that kind of a reminiscent of undersea area. This is a, well, that's actually, I think, that's Magellan right there, I believe. And you can kind of see, it's not rendered in high detail, but these will be probably made out of wood, and looking up there at how that's going to look. This would be right before you get on, if you're right before you got on the ferry boat headed to Balboa Island, you would see the side of the building like that. And that is, if you're on John Wayne Airport taking off, and you're looking over, this is what you'll see. The slope of the solar ray on top is not that much. I don't know if you'll actually see that from the ground, but that's what you'll see from the rooftop there. So that concludes the presentation for today. Do you have any questions at all that I can answer?
Are there questions for the president?
Yeah. Tom, can you share with us, if you feel like you can, some sense of what your funding picture looks like right now? I mean, you've got, this is a big effort, it's going to take a fair amount of commitment financially just to move your plan forward. How do you feel about your current positioning?
Well, we feel really good. We are...
I mean, you've got, this is a big effort, it's going to take a fair amount of commitment financially just to move your plan forward. How do you feel about your current positioning?
Well, we feel really good. We are probably one of the best endowed nautical museums in the country, if you want to use that as a term. We have about an $8 million unrestricted investment portfolio, which is committed to this project right now. So we're able to pay for many of the things that we've done to date. We haven't had to raise money necessarily to do some of the things that we've shown up there to do. And that's a driving force on any project, is when you have the cash and the capital to actually move it forward. So we feel very confident that, in a sense, we've already got between 10 and 15% of the money already raised. And we just started our capital campaign on this, for this, you know, maybe six weeks ago. We started moving things out. We built the capital campaign office on the boardwalk and staffing up for it. So we feel very confident in what we have right now and the people that we're bringing to the table.
And I presume your campaign will be focused on large corporate lead donors and...
Typically, it's in three stages. You have a leadership gift phase where people that want to maybe perhaps have their name on the building, along those lines, and then they'll typically set the tone for the campaign. And then the campaign ends up opening up to the major donors, where, say, the donor wall. Right now, if you notice, we can show you the outside of the building. We haven't gone to schematic phase. When we do, we'd like to come back. We can show you the inside of the building. That's scheduled for next year. And the major donor phase, where, say, 300 names, X amount get involved. And then the last phase is the public phase towards the very end, after you've got the project financeable with the banks and you've raised the money to build it. So it's a three-phase project, thus the timeframe you saw up there.
Councilman Selich?
Based on the schedule you have showing up there, if the city's going to do a parking structure, what do you see the trigger date being for that?
That's a good question. It depends on what type of structure and how big. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can answer that one exactly for you, give you an exact date.
Okay. What's your, you gave a schedule up there but didn't have a lot of detail in it. What's your schedule for processing your applications through the city and the coastal commission and presenting plans to different areas of the city that might be affected by this project? How do you see that proceeding, and what's your schedule for that?
I think today is our first time to come before you formally. I think we've had informal conversations with somebody individually along the line, and that's why we're here tonight, actually, to take your, seek your advice and counsel on that, but as soon as possible. Tim, perhaps, if you have anything you want to present on that?
Just direct to the slide that's up here.
You want to come forward if you're going to speak?
Mm-hmm. Come on up here.
For the people at home, maybe.
Yeah.
Councilman Selich, the schedule, as we see it, to approach the city formally through the planning department is a six-month process, and we just have conceptual plans now. We want to get through the schematic. And then the coastal commission, we're allowing a 12-month term there. You can see the dates involved. And then on the next slide, we get into the plan check and the construction drawing.
Okay, okay, we'll go back, go back. That's where you're losing me there. So schematic design, environmental studies, three months. What kind of environmental studies are you anticipating? Have you, you know, as far as you're looking at an EIR, a negative declaration? What do you think you're going to need?
Well, we would hope, we would hope something less than a full EIR. We think the focus areas are going to be noise, traffic, parking, perhaps somewhat the water, depending upon the amount of disturbance in the waterfront, but we don't think that's going to be major. We're actually looking to accelerate that and do it earlier, namely, the dredging aspect. We would hope for a mitigated negative deck.
Yeah, that looks a little, I don't know if aggressive is the right word, but seems like it would...
Optimistic?
Optimistic, yeah. Nine months to go through Planning Commission, City Council, and do the environmental stuff? Doesn't quite seem realistic to me. Maybe the staff can comment on that. I'm just trying to ascertain how realistic the schedule is, that's all.
I'll take that as my cue. I'm Kim Brant, Community Development Director. Without really having the opportunity to go through the proposed plan in detail, I think that a realistic schedule is probably nine months to a year. We can't come to a conclusion whether or not we can do a negative declaration until we understand the scope of the impacts. If we have any type of unavoidable adverse impact, that would move us into an environmental impact report. But again, that could be a focused environmental impact report. But again, until we have all the information, it's hard to make that call.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, I just, I'd just comment that from my perspective here in the First District, I think this is a critical project to move forward. I'm thrilled that you're so enthusiastic and so focused on getting this done, and so we'll have to look for the opportunities that we can, that the city can support and facilitate moving this forward as your plans gel better.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Mayor Gardner, and thank you for having us here today, and fellow city council members, City Manager Dave Kiff, and the public. We really, really are excited by what we have today to show you, and we feel that it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful, stunning cultural attraction on the waterfront here in the Balboa Peninsula. So thank you very much for your time today. We look forward to working with you and the staff in the future here.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the local impacts of AB 109.
That's a good question. Thank you, Mayor Gardner and council members. This comes to you in part as a request from Councilmember Daigle, who asked for an update on something that the police have been very close to the past, almost a year now, when the governor and the legislature worked through what they called a realignment process, which involves moving state prisoners to county facilities, and some county facilities, county prisoners go out the door into supervised release. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chief Johnson to give you an update on what that has meant for us and will continue to mean for us.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Gardner and city council members. It's always a pleasure to stand before you and present you with updated public safety information. And as was mentioned, the AB 109 is our topic tonight. I had a conversation with Councilmember Daigle several weeks now on various public safety issues, and AB 109 was one of those, and expressed with her my concern of this impact, the impact of AB 109, and she thought it would be a good idea to present this to all of you. So I've asked our Detective Division Commander, Captain Johnson, as well as Senior Crime Analyst Caroline Stott, who's with us tonight, to put together this presentation with all the facts and data for you on what AB 109 is, the impacts it has on us and the surrounding region. But before I hand it off to them, I want to give you my opinion as your chief and my thoughts on AB 109's impacts on Newport Beach. And that opinion is that I'm very, very concerned, very concerned about the impacts this has and, more importantly, will have on our city. In my 25-plus years of experience in law enforcement, I don't think I've seen anything that would, any single thing that's going to have a greater impact on crime, the increase in crime, than AB 109. And that very much concerns me. We've already seen, since its implementation, basically, an increase in crime in just about every city around us so far. And although a lot of people aren't ready to say this is a result of AB 109, every chief I've talked to will tell you it's a result of AB 109. And there's two issues that we're dealing with with AB 109. One is the number of prisoners that are being released, thousands of prisoners that are being released early from state prison. And knowing that the recidivism rate is between, depending on what study you look at, the recidivism rate is between 70 to 80%. So we know if the recidivism rate is 70 to 80%, then the overwhelming majority of these folks are coming back to the streets to commit crimes. That's one problem. The second problem is the folks that we do arrest, since AB 109 was put into place, no longer, or very few do, go to prison. And those that go to county jail don't go for nearly the length of time, and many times much shorter sentences than they did in the past, meaning that we have essentially a lot more criminals out on the streets. Coupled with the reduction in law enforcement throughout the state and the region and several other factors, it's a great concern, a great concern of mine, and watching this previous presentation from Explore Ocean and looking at the video, the slides of beautiful Newport Beach and all the attractions here, and that this is truly a destination city, part of that is the fact that we're a safe city. We're a very safe city, and it's imperative, I think, and my job, to make sure that it remains that way. And just know that this is a concern of mine, and Captain Johnson will present to you some more of those details and why it's such a concern, and we'll be available to answer any questions that you have.
Good afternoon. As the chief mentioned, AB 109, it's also referred to as the Public Safety Realignment Act. I'd like to give you just a little bit of background and how the act actually came about and the reasons why. Talk a little bit about what the impacts we've seen so far, and also talk about how the Newport Beach Police Department is prepared and is attempting to address these issues as they arise. AB 109 essentially was an assembly bill that was created based on a finding by the United States Supreme Court that said the California prison system was overcrowded. It ordered that the California Department of Corrections reduce its prison population to 137.5% of their design capacity. The way that they essentially chose to do this would be to transfer many of the prisoners which are currently in custody with the California Department of Corrections to the county jurisdictions. They would then transfer the supervision of those when they were released from what is currently state parole to the county probation departments. Implementation of the program began October 1st of 2011. It was estimated at the time of implementation that there would be approximately 3,434 additional offenders that would be released, either without supervision or with minimal supervision, from the county probation departments by the time that the program had been completely It also allows prisoners that are currently, excuse me, it also allows for not just the transfer of prisoners from state parole and from the state California Department of Corrections, but it also creates enlightened guidelines for sentencing and for the way the crime is actually prosecuted. Those include redefining felonies of some sorts down to misdemeanors so that they don't result in incarceration of a prison sentence. Yes, ma'am?
You said enlightened, but I think you mean lighter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. What it does is it essentially allows less people that routinely would be incarcerated, either at the county level or at the state prison level, and they no longer will be doing so. That would include items such as house arrests, again, creative sentencing and creative prosecutions in order to allow these people not to be incarcerated to begin with. So the numbers, when we talk about the 3,400 prisoners that are due to be released earlier be transferred to the county, the numbers are actually far greater than that as we move forward, because many of those prisoners or those criminals that would ordinarily be taken off the street will not be. As a result of the transfer of responsibility for both the incarceration and the supervision of these prisoners, the state allocated $25 million to the County of Orange in order to help manage and supervise this transfer. Of that, only $694,000 has been allocated to municipal law enforcement, meaning departments such as the Newport Beach Police Department. The largest portion of it goes to the Orange County Sheriff's Department, who will house many of the prisoners, and also to the Orange County Probation Department, who will now have the primary supervision responsibilities that had currently been provided by California Department of Corrections and the parole division. Now, the money, the $694,000, which is to be divided among the departments, essentially will be used in order to supplement probation in the supervision of these offenders. That largely is determined based on how much time probation comes into the individual cities to provide sweeps or inspections or to look for violators. As I said before, that in addition to the transfer of responsibilities for housing and supervision of the prisoners, the relaxed sentencing guidelines and creative sentencing will also reduce the number of people that go to jail to begin with. Now, the impacted offenders, those that are, that have qualified for this particular program are primarily what are referred to as low-level or nonviolent inmates. Crimes that they're incarcerated for, such as burglary, thefts, narcotics violators, those sort of prisoners are the ones who have been eligible for this program. How does that impact the city of Newport Beach? In 2011, the last calendar year, 80% of our Part I crimes involve property crimes. That's specifically the type of crimes that the offenders who are being released or not sentenced or who are not being supervised to the fullest extent upon their release, that's what they do. That's what they do. The chief mentioned the recidivism rate of these offenders, and that gives you an idea of the number of people that will be in the community that have already committed these crimes in the past. Now, where are we at so far with the estimated 3,400 releases? So far, there have been 1,896 total releases through the Public Safety Realignment Act. Of those, 15 have been released as their city of origin of the city of Newport Beach. Sounds like a fairly minor number for us to manage within our city. But here's where the issues for the city of Newport Beach get more grave. As you can see, there have been 62 in Huntington Beach directly to our west, 92 in Costa Mesa directly to our north, 37 in Newport, 219 in Anaheim, and 346 in Santa Ana. The rest of them make up the other cities in Orange County, including the county patrolled areas of the county also. One thing that we know in Newport as a crime trend and as a pattern that has been true in the 25 years that I've been here is that very few of the crimes that are committed in our city are committed by residents. The vast majority are created by those that come into our city from outside and other jurisdictions and victimize our residences. Of the crimes that we talked about before, burglaries, garage burglaries, theft of motor vehicles, precisely the sort of crimes that the offenders that are being released have committed in their previous convictions. We talked about recidivism rates, and the recidivism rate for public safety realignment thus far, there have been 677, or nearly 26% of those that have been released through this program have had what's recalled, known as flash incarcerations. The probation department managing these offenders can order them to be flash incarcerated, meaning sent back to county jail for up to 10 days for essentially a status offense, meaning that if they fail a drug test, if they are associating with known felons, if they are outpass or curfew or violate any of the provisions of their release, they can be incarcerated for up to 10 days at a time. As a comparison, those same offenders for parole violations would go back to prison for the same violations anywhere from six months to a year. So you have 10 days that the probation department, on their own authority, can order them to go back. They cannot be revoked back to state prison. Another 15% of those violators have had what's referred to as revocations. Revocations are actually a hearing, usually as a result of committing another crime, at which time the offender can go back to county jail for not in excess of 180 days. That's the maximum limit that they can be referred back into custody for any violations of their release, even if that included commission of new crimes. New street crimes would be prosecuted separately in a separate manner. That would not, that would impact perhaps whether or not they got revocated, but not whether or not they had to stay past 180 days. As the chief mentioned, recidivism rates...
Let me make sure I understand what you just said. So somebody that was released under the program gets arrested for home theft, burglary, and they get convicted of that burglary, they still can't go back to county jail for more than a total of 180 days? Is that what...
If they were convicted of the burglary, the sentencing on that new crime would be attached, whether it be a state prison sentence or county jail sentence. But for instance, if he, if the offender is arrested for burglary, he can only be revocated and sent back to county under this program for 180 days.
Okay.
Any new sentencing for any new crimes that were committed would be added on at the end.
In addition to that.
Exactly. Again, in comparison, a mere arrest for a crime like that would have resulted in at least a one-year commitment back under state parole guidelines in the past, and that would be on top of any additional crime that was committed. What we're seeing is that even though we can do flash incarcerations, county probation can do flash incarcerations, and they can do revocations, the time that these people can be taken back, even for violating the terms of their release, is insignificant in comparison to what the control factors that state parole had on them previous to this program. Again, the recidivism rates that we discussed earlier, this is the averages for the state of California. You can see for one year, the average is approximately 50% after one year of release, recommit crimes. Within two years, it's 60%, and at three years, the average is 65%. It varies based on the type of original crime that they committed. But you can also see that the property crimes, and I know it's a little small, but that's the blue bar on the far left, the averages are higher than in any other classification. And again, just to point out, property crimes, and those that commit property crimes, are the number-one crime issue that we have in the city of Newport Beach. So what, how has the Public Safety Realignment Act impacted the city of Newport Beach thus far? From January 1st, which is just the beginning of this year, this program was actually initiated in October of 2011, and we've tracked the numbers... in October of 2011, and we've tracked the numbers for the purposes of this presentation from January 1st until June 30th, so the first six months of this year. We've made 21 arrests of violators that were, their status was, under the Public Safety Realignment Act. PRCS is Post-Release Community Supervision, and I know that's a lot of letters we're throwing at you, but 21 arrests in our city for those violators. Here's what's interesting, and I think the part that is often overlooked when we refer to this program. This program is in addition to those offenders that are already on standard probation, meaning that have been given probation and supervision at the county level based on their sentencing or their release agreements, and those that did not qualify for this program and are still under the supervision of California Department of Corrections and the Patrol Division, Correction, the Parole Division. Of those supervised offenders, we've made 204 arrests so far this last six months. And we've contacted well in excess, and we don't have exact numbers on that, but well in excess when you count citations, field contacts that didn't result in an arrest, but well over 500 of those offenders that fall under one of those categories. So it's important to remember when we talk about the public safety realignment, this is in addition to state parole. This is in addition to those that are already on probation for various offenses. Yes, ma'am?
Captain Johnson, the, you know, I understand the shift from the state to the local level, county level, because to ease overcrowding. Is there kind of a philosophical shift with this, too, in terms of, you know, you keep talking about probation, more of a kind of a touchy-feely approach to, let's try to get people to work things out through probation and that component of the system versus, okay, let's have more, a little more law in order in terms of they've broken the law, they're going back to prison? I mean, is there sort of that shift involved with this as well?
I think that you would, that you would see that more in the sentencing guidelines, which have been loosened a little bit under this act, meaning that prosecutors have, and judges have greater ability to lessen the sentencing that perhaps would result in a state prison term before, may result in a shorter county term. I know that the Orange County Probation Department, they take the supervision of these offenders very, very seriously, every bit as seriously as parole did, and yet the tools that they have, based on this act, in order to control the offenders and control the people that have been released under this, are far less significant. And I don't know if that answers your question, but that would be the best I could do.
Okay. And then at the county level, in terms of how the resources are going to be allocated, the state gives the county some money, and then there's like a committee, I think the police chief has a seat on that committee, but probation also has a seat, so they have a big say in terms of how resources are going to be allocated, which may mean that we're never going to get full reimbursement for our efforts.
And that is, and we were going to talk about that in a moment, that's part of the catch-22 in this. Newport Beach has been somewhat insulated in the number of offenders which have been released into our city, only 15. And you see the large numbers that have been released to the rest of the county. That $694,000, which has been allocated through the committee for municipal law enforcement, is going to be allocated primarily to those which have been impacted with larger numbers of people within their city, Santa Ana, Anaheim, some of those other cities. The problem for Newport Beach is those same offenders, although they don't live here, we know from our experience and from our data, that they come into our city and commit crimes. So, yes, ma'am, the financial impact on the police department to come up with programs and ways to supervise, to aggressively impact these individuals in our city is significant.
May I?
Yes, sir.
What, in the, in the process of coming up with this reimbursement mentality, why wouldn't they have focused on the reimbursement per rearrest versus the reimbursement per release? I mean, if someone is released and never causes another problem, there's no cost. There's only a cost when they have to be arrested again.
Number one, my personal opinion is that the amount of money that was, and that leads to another point I was going to make, the estimate of 3,400, we are at a much higher pace to exceed the number that was estimated of people released to Orange County. So that number that was an estimate that the funding was based upon, looks like it's going to be low. $25 million, it just got down to a point where there wasn't enough money to go around. The Orange County Sheriff's Department has to house 3,400 people based on an estimate. They got the lion's share of the funding. The Orange County Probation Department, now they have an additional 3,400 offenders to supervise. They have to have staffing, they have to have infrastructure, all the things to increase their work levels so significantly. And in the end, there just wasn't a lot left over for municipal law enforcement. Most of the money will be allocated based on our ability to partner with probation when they come into our cities, to reimburse our officers for doing sweeps, for doing home inspections, those sort of things. And it's, there just wasn't enough money to begin with. If it was reallocated, perhaps in the manner that you suggested, Newport Beach, based on the somewhat minimal number of arrests just for this program of 21, would also probably not stand to be reimbursed for our total effort that we're putting forward. So now the next question is, is this program impacting the crime rates within Orange County? This is just a snapshot of some of the cities in the county, some of them that are adjacent to us, others that have higher numbers of those released under the Public Safety Realignment Act. As you can see, most every city, with the exception of Tustin and, I might add, the city of Newport Beach, have increases, sometimes significant increases, in their Part I crime rates from January 1st through June of this year. The numbers primarily are property crime-related, from what I understand, from our crime analyst, but you can see they've gone up significantly, particularly in our neighboring cities. Huntington Beach, 13%. Laguna Beach is up, not horribly significantly. We were unable to obtain the numbers from Irvine for their crime rate at this point, although we're told that it's pretty stable from last year. So we see the crime rates are going up. We see that they're going up. It seems to be somewhat consistent with the areas that the larger numbers of these offenders are being released to. So then, what we try to do as a police department is analyze that and say, what can we say for sure? What kind of data can we look at? And how can we seek to impact these trends in the future and continue to serve the community? The first thing that I think needs to be, needs to be said is the reason for crime and the reason for crime increases are very, very complex. There are matters of economics, sociology, education, cultural issues that impact it, and far smarter people than I have spent lifetimes studying the reasons for these increases. So we need to keep that in mind, and it's easy to just to point to the Public Safety Realignment Act and say, this is the reason why, but I'd like to, I'd like to hold off on that for a little while. The other thing that we know, we've known for a great period of time, is that crime is a regional problem, no more so anywhere than Newport Beach. Again, the vast majority of the crime that's committed are property crimes, and they're committed by those that come from outside our city in order to provide the crimes. So this is not just a community issue, it's a regional problem for the entire law enforcement profession. And lastly, just based on pure data, even though the empirical data seems to suggest to us that AB 109 has directly led to the increase in crime, it's just too early, really, to say that that's the case. Although, we intend to track the data and to look at the trends strongly in order to try to reach those conclusions, which we'll be able to present for funding options and as we go back to the state and try to plan with the chiefs and the sheriffs around the state. But we can talk about some trends. We can talk about some things that we believe to be true indicators, and this is when we think about the future and we try to project in a more strategic manner, what are we looking at as a Newport Beach Police Department in order to impact future crime trends? Number one is the economy. All of us know about the economic downturn that the country, the state, and our region has been sustained in over the last several years. The economy is one of the elements which does lead to crime increases. People that are often not inclined to commit crimes, if their economic situation becomes such, they may turn to that as a way to answer their economic problems. We also know that when the economy's down and people are struggling, that the increase in narcotics use and alcohol use is somewhat significant, and that also has a direct impact on crime. The next one is the long-term impacts of AB 109. As we've seen, there have been far, far more numerous offenders which have been released or are planning to be released than we had originally estimated. We know that in the future, under this act, that far fewer offenders will actually be sentenced and removed from our environment to commit crimes. And so it just logically makes sense that with more offenders in the community and more offenders out on the road with the recidivism rates, that crime regionally and possibly within the city of Newport Beach has a potential of increasing significantly. And lastly, and this is kind of the perfect storm kind of scenario that, you know, that we always worry about, is the economic impacts on local government. Almost every department, every agency, every municipal government, certainly in our region, has been impacted dramatically with the economic downturn, and the answer is to reduce staff. Almost every department, I can't think of any department that has not been impacted by reducing staffing, reducing programs, whether it be policing programs, education programs, but resources have been reduced. It's just, it was a necessary reaction on behalf of the economic downturn. At precisely the time that that is occurring, we are releasing and causing more offenders to be on the road. So police departments are trying to impact with more offenders with less resources. The city of Newport Beach has been very fortunate. Again, we've been somewhat insulated. Thanks very much to the support of the city council and your fiscal responsibility. The Newport Beach Police Department hasn't felt nearly the crunch in resources that some of our neighboring cities have. But as time moves forward, we're not sure what these impacts are going to have. So what are we doing about it? The Newport Beach Police Department right now, we've taken a couple of steps under the leadership of Chief Johnson. One is we have reorganized our police department. That has allowed us to have now, in the patrol division, which is the tip of the spear, so to speak, and the ability, the place where we are most able to impact these types of crimes and these types of offenders. We have more budgeted positions in our patrol division now than, again, than I can recall in the 25 years that I've been here. We've also reorganized the patrol division and implemented a new scheduling system that essentially allows us to have more police officers on the road at the peak hours when our crimes are occurring and at the peak times and dates that we need them to be there. We've also implemented and restructured our crime analysis program. Senior Crime Analyst Caroline Staub has brought a great deal of technical skill and allowed us to get to data, and we want to get into a predictive policing model, whereupon we can provide to the patrol division better indicators of where crimes are going to occur so that we can be more proactive in dealing with them as opposed to being reactive with them. We also have a gang suppression unit, which in other years have been used primarily for gang violators and to work with other county organizations addressing gang issues. They're being repurposed within the patrol division to work closely with the probation department, to do the sweeps that we talked about, to move into, to go into other jurisdictions when they're doing activities on offenders that we know are engaging criminal activity in our own jurisdiction. And we also have our Detective Division, which has traditionally been the point spot in maintaining intelligence, operating with other organizations such as the probation department, the patrol department, maintaining lines of communication, actually partnering with them, so that we're able to have the best intelligence as possible, and again, to very aggressively in other jurisdictions where these offenders are living. We go into them, we let them know that if they commit a crime in Newport Beach, we don't care where you live, we're going to come and get you. That's a brief overview. It's a complex issue and a complex situation, but I would just like to leave you by saying that the men and the women of the Newport Beach Police Department are committed to the safety of this community. Again, very, very much thanks to the council for the resources that you allow us in order to meet that mission, and we think that the Newport Beach community deserves the finest in police services, and that's our mission to try to provide it. I know it was a lot of information, and any questions that I can answer.
Councilmember Daigle?
By your own account, the presentation may have been brief, but obviously you've put, the department's been putting a lot of time and thought into this issue, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I think we should also remind, also remind our residents not to give them the opportunity to do the simple things like locking the car and locking the house up and that sort of thing.
If I could take that opportunity just to express also, of the property crimes, of which 80% of our Part I crimes are property crimes, roughly for unsecured, a large position, more than half of those crimes are committed with unsecured vehicles, unsecured garages, unsecured homes, windows in your cars which are left down. So that is, that is one of the keys, and as we move forward, the education of the public is one of the, is one of the major processes that we hope to continue with.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Curry?
Thank you for that very excellent presentation, and I think it just points out the problems that once again the governor and the legislature are causing this stake. Those budget cuts are resulting in crime increasing throughout California. Now, we're fortunate we don't have a redevelopment agency here, but they cut redevelopment. And in Westminster, where we saw, by your slides, large increases in crime, part of the cutback there was directly in the police department as a result of the state's action. The state found it in its own budget to increase its spending by $5 billion. They found it within their jurisdiction to be able to fund a train between Bakersfield and God knows where, but they seem to be unable to house the prisoners that would need to be taken off the streets in California. And that's a big problem in California that faces all of us, and I hope the voters, they keep that in mind when they consider the legislative proposals to continue the status quo in Sacramento, it's got to change.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Absolutely.
All right. Is there public comment on items on the closed session agenda or other items? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session.